And I'll be helping to facilitate tonight's discussion with Commissioners Leslie Dahl Kemper, Andy Kerr, and County Manager Joe Kirby. We also have several other subject matter experts joining us as well. If you're interested in enabling subtitles in another language, you can do that at the bottom of your screen by selecting Closed Captioning and your preferred language. Tonight, we plan to focus on two main topics while also answering questions submitted by the community. Those topics include wildfire preparedness and mitigation and the county's budget. We want to invite you to submit questions you might have for county leadership. Although tonight's discussion will focus mainly on those topics, please feel free to ask about any county issues that are important to you. If you do have a question, please submit them in the chat. You do need to join us via a computer to submit a question through the chat. Our team will make note of your question, and we will call on you to ask your question. So please submit your question in the chat now if you already have one, and you're also welcome to just listen in. Before we send it over to Commissioner Dahl Kemper to kick off tonight's discussion, we want to survey those listening on several county-related subjects. To participate, just click on the answer that you choose. Survey question number one: How familiar are you with the services and resources provided by Jefferson County? You have three options: very familiar, somewhat familiar, or not familiar. Select your answer now. We'll have a few more questions throughout the town hall, so stick around to make sure your voice is heard. And with that, let's turn it over to Commissioner Dahl Kemper.
Great, thanks so much, Amber. I'm Leslie Dahl Kemper, and I represent District Three or South Jefferson County, which includes Littleton, Morrison, Conifer, Evergreen, and portions of Lakewood. We're so happy you're here with us this evening. I'm also one of two county commissioners appointed by Governor Polis to the Colorado Fire Commission, and I chair the Jeffco Wildfire Commission as well. Together, we've been working with you, our community, first responders, forest health experts, water specialists, county leaders, and many others to reduce wildfire risk here in Jefferson County. We'll talk more in just a moment about the factors in Jeffco that make fast-moving wildfires harder to contain and require us to think in new ways about growth, development, and forest health in the wildland urban interface, also known as WUI. There's no one solution to address wildfire risk, and it really does require all of us doing our part. That's why we're taking a collaborative approach to this issue in Jefferson County with the help of our Jeffco Wildfire Commission, major initiatives like Together Jeffco, and much more. We also want to give a huge shout-out tonight to first responders, our Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, firefighters, Jeffco Open Space, and other partners including Red Cross, Jeffco Public Schools who were involved in the Quarry Fire. I'm sure our special guest tonight may talk more about that tonight as well. But we're so grateful for everyone who assisted on that fire, and then the more recent Gultra Fire as well. Speaking of our special guests, we're excited to have with us tonight Mark Guckey. He's joining us, and Mark is the Wildfire Program Manager with the Sheriff's Office. Tonight, we want to talk more about wildfire preparedness with him. A quick reminder: If you have a question, please submit your question in the chat. And Mark, thanks so much for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl Kemper. In Jeffco, we're at a very high risk of wildfires. That means heightened risk of lives, homes, natural resources. I'm glad we're having this discussion tonight because increased public knowledge and awareness can help prevent wildfires, mitigate fire impacts, facilitate more effective fire response, and help protect the citizens of Jefferson County.
Mark, talk to us about why our risk in Jefferson County is so high.
Well, the risk in Jefferson County comes from a number of different factors, including the types of vegetation we call fuels, topography, weather, fire history, natural and man-made, and values at risk: homes, infrastructure, and ever-important watersheds. These factors are modeled to show overall fire risk. Some areas rank as extreme, while others moderate. In addition, the large percentage of wildland urban interface, or WUI, throughout the county where structures meet the wildlands, forestry, is a major contributing factor to all of our overall risk rating. Historically, the WUI in Jeffco was mapped at locations of 6,400 feet in elevation and above, but our ever-changing environment and risk exposure has caused us to reconsider WUI areas. County is currently updating our Community Wildfire Protection Plan, or CWPP, as part of the Together Jeffco Master Plan update. We are proposing an increase in the WUI areas, which will result in 91% of the county being designated within the WUI. The Marshall Fire east of Boulder in 2021 is a tragic example of why expanded WUI areas need to be included in future wildfire planning efforts.
Mark, one of the most important needs that we have is working with our community members and making sure that they're well-prepared should they face evacuation, should they face wildfire risk. What's your best advice to those who are listening tonight to ensure they're prepared?
Well, notification has to be priority. Be prepared ahead of time. If you haven't already, register with Lookout Alert, which serves as our primary 911 notification system to residents for wildfires and other all-hazard events. In addition, prepare a to-go bag with important documents, medications, and information you may need if an evacuation is required. Next, take steps to prepare your property and home to be more resistant to a wildfire event by creating defensible space and home hardening measures. RotaryWildFireReady.com is an excellent online source of information and links to help become more educated on wildfire preparedness. Second, during a wildfire or evacuation event, try and remain calm and become informed. Be aware of alerts pushed out by Lookout Alert, which is through the 911 system. Search social media, all forums. Listen to the radio and/or check local news broadcasts for fire reports and evacuation information. Follow and do not delay in any action on instructions given by authorities. Tell family and friends you are evacuating and let them know where you are going. More than anything, if you become aware, concerned, or uncomfortable in a situation, please do not wait and be told to evacuate. Just do it. Last, as you evacuate, and if there is time and it is safe to do so, post a large note on your door of your home that tells when you left and where you were going with a contact number. If there is time, close and lock all windows, close vents, and all interior doors. Remove lightweight curtains and shut off the gas utilities. Remove any planted pots, patio furniture, or clutter from your deck and place in the garage if it's available.
Mark, that's great advice. Thank you so much. What is your best advice to the public in terms of supporting our first responders?
Well, during large-scale disasters, responding agencies, law enforcement, fire, and EMS are obviously very busy taking action to prevent loss of life and property, trying to gain control of the situation and mitigating its impact on the community. As a result, emergency personnel and resources may be spread very thin and may not be able to provide assistance for you and your family quickly. Therefore, residents are always encouraged to take matters in their own hands, to be, quote, "be your own hero," unquote. That information can be found on Jeffco Sheriff's website. Rather than relay or rely on the ability of law enforcement and fire personnel to rescue you, to save your property during wildfire or other all-hazard disasters, as identified in the Jefferson County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mark, thanks so much for joining us to talk about these issues. Do you have any final thoughts?
Well, I can't stress enough the importance of being prepared ahead of time and registering on Lookout. It's the most important action any individual can do. Taking time now to become informed and prepared will help mitigate the urgency during the actual incident and serve as the most beneficial actions to protecting your life and property when threatened by a wildfire or other all-hazard incident.
Thanks so much, Mark. If you have a question, please submit a question in the chat, and let's take some time to address some questions and concerns from the community.
Our first question is for Commissioner Dahl Kemper. What resources do you have for evacuating large animals in case of a fire?
That's a great question, and I'm going to share this one with Mark as well, but we have a number of resources. First, working with our Jefferson County Sheriff Office's animal control experts, and they played a pivotal role during the Quarry Fire in terms of rescuing animals, making sure they're safe. And often, we evacuate them to our Jeffco fairgrounds. We had, goodness, I think we had more than 40 volunteers who worked around the clock with more than 240 animals during the Quarry Fire, if I'm not mistaken. It was really an incredible effort. We also work closely with Foothills Animal Shelter to help with the evacuation of smaller animals should community members have those needs as well. Mark, what else would you add in terms of animal evacuations?
That about covers it greatly. There's a large group of volunteers that come throughout the county with all the necessary horse trailers and large animal equipment, as well as the small animal, to try to remove those from threatened properties and get them to a safe location. They're badged and get into the scene as needed, and rely on them heavily.
Thank you.
We have another question for Commissioner Dahl Kemper and Mark. How will our fire mitigation efforts help with the cost of homeowner's insurance?
Thanks so much. This is a question that is top of mind for many of the constituents that Commissioner Kerr, Krafttharp, and I talk with. It is a very serious issue, especially for our Jeffco Foothills communities, including Evergreen, Conifer, Pine, areas of South Jeffco, including even portions of Lakewood. And we know that homeowners and neighborhoods who do the work of creating defensible space around their homes, who mitigate and more, should see insurance that's affordable. But the reality is, given the risk not only of wildfire, but the compounding costs of hail in Colorado, homeowner's insurance costs have skyrocketed. And in some cases, it's just simply unattainable for some homeowners. Jefferson County Commissioners have been working very closely with the Colorado Division of Insurance, Commissioner Mike Conway, the insurance industry, and other partners on solutions, along with our statewide organization, Colorado Counties, Inc. And in fact, at a town hall we held a little bit earlier this month in Evergreen, the Division of Insurance shared more about their efforts, and they're very interested in hearing your stories. What issues are you facing in terms of homeowner's insurance? One realtor shared that a potential homeowner balked when she learned her dream home in Evergreen came with a cool $19,000 price tag for homeowner's insurance. And we know that's bad for communities and bad for local businesses. So know that we're working hard with these different partners to find some consistency across the board in terms of the skyrocketing cost of homeowner's insurance, and we're hopeful we may see some potential remedies in the upcoming 2025 legislative session.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl Kemper. We have a question for Commissioner Kerr. Climate change has caused this rise in wildfire events, and how is the county addressing those environmental issues?
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. So a couple of years ago, the county commissioners unanimously adopted our Climate Action Plan. This action plan was put forward by our Sustainability Commission, working with our Sustainability Department. We have a group of employees who focus on keeping the county, all the various departments and employees, giving them the tools and resources to be as sustainable as possible, and working with our volunteers on the Sustainability Commission, and then going out and working with experts in the field. We were able to adopt our Climate Action Plan. This is a plan, as developed, to make sure that your county government is working with municipalities, working with the business community, and providing tools and resources for everyone within the county who would like to participate and work towards a more sustainable future. Not everyone is able to participate to the same degree. In fact, one of the key points of the Climate Action Plan is equity and knowing that climate change and the negative effects of climate change have a larger impact on our communities that are least likely to be able to adapt to those changes. And within that, the Climate Action Plan doesn't spell out exactly what everyone should do. In fact, it gives multiple pathways and options for people participating to help us all move towards a more sustainable future.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. We have a question for Tom Hoby here regarding open spaces handling of wildfire mitigation. That question is, what opportunities for communication with the community about past and future plans in Elk Meadow have been and will be offered?
Well, thank you for the question. Our community engagement on our forest health work, on fire mitigation work, has been fairly robust. We've attended a number of meetings that have been hosted by fire districts. We've hosted meetings ourselves with our staff. We've also met with individuals and neighborhoods and homeowner's associations to explain why we're doing what we're doing, what we plan on doing, and seek input on those opportunities. We'll continue to do that with each of the prescriptions that we develop for the various forest health work projects that we have.
Thanks, Tom, and we're going to take one more question. The next question is for Commissioner Dahl Kemper and Mark. Which areas of Jeffco are most at risk?
Great, thanks so much for that question. You know, you heard Mark mention a little bit earlier our Together Jeffco initiative, and as we look at the wildland urban interface in Jefferson County, and we continue to see population growth, our top priority is ensuring that our community is safe. And that in part has to do with how we define the wildland urban interface. We are now looking at extending the wildland urban interface to 91% of Jefferson County. And what does that mean for you in terms of your everyday life and on a practical level? It may have an impact in terms of how we think about land use codes, how we make decisions about rezoning, vegetation, and more. But really, it's those forested areas that are among the highest-risk areas in Jefferson County. And Mark, I'm going to turn it over to you to see if there's more that you'd like to add to this question.
Well, as we've stated, about 91% of the county is going to be within the WUI definition now. Marshall Fire in Boulder County shows the grass are at great risk and can fuel, and they can make it go faster. So all that was taken in with the fire districts. We did some conversations with insurance and all that, but we think that's the best way to prepare for it, is put it all under the watchful eyes.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Commissioner Dahl Kemper, and thank you to everyone who is submitting your questions. We greatly appreciate it. Just remember, if you have any questions and things that you would like answered, please submit your question in the chat. Just a reminder, you can only submit those questions and participate in that poll if you're joining us via a computer. Before we hop into our next topic, we're going to do another survey question. Survey question number two: How would you rank your quality of life in Jeffco? Rate, good, it's okay, not good, or poor? Please select your answer now that you find most fitting on your screen. We'll have one more question toward the end of tonight's discussion, so hang on the line. And now, Commissioner Kerr, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Amber. And I'm Andy Kerr. I represent District Two, which is the central part of Jefferson County, including Wheat Ridge, parts of Lakewood, Golden, and Evergreen. So Tom Hoby, who is the Parks Director with Parks and Conservation, will be joining us now to highlight some of the ways we support wildfire mitigation efforts. And a quick reminder: If you have a question, please submit your question in the chat.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. As many of you are aware, and as Mark highlighted earlier, wildfire mitigation is the process of taking action before wildfire starts to reduce its severity and negative effects. The goal is to reduce the risk of property loss, personal injury, and of course, death from fire. How can community members...
That's great, thanks, Tom. So how can community take action to protect their homes?
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. Got ahead of myself a little bit there. The county has a SLASH program, which is administered by our Land Stewardship Resources Team in partnership with the Jefferson Conservation District. Just a reminder, SLASH is debris from nature, such as tree limbs, prunings, and pine cones. If not removed, SLASH can add to potential fire hazards on your property. The importance of mitigating and preparing your property for wildfire can't be overstated. But don't worry, Jefferson County is your partner in this effort through our SLASH program. Our website, www.jeffco.us/2493, has all the drop-off locations listed and dates and locations that sites are open.
Thanks for that info. And so why should people be concerned about SLASH?
Removing SLASH and creating defensible space around your home is really the first line of defense for your property against wildfire. You can create zones around your home, removing any fuels, such as tree debris, pine cones, and pine needles. Having a properly mitigated property doesn't mean that wildfire will pass you by, but it gives the firefighters a better opportunity to save your home when it comes time.
Thanks, Tom. And I want to talk for Development and Transportation Director Adele Montoya. And Adele, can you talk about the county's Community Wildfire Protection Plan?
Thank you, Commissioner. We are currently in the process of updating the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, or CWPP. The CWPP was inspired by the creation of the Healthy Forest Restoration Act from 2003. After that, the Colorado State Senate Bill directed the establishment of guidelines and criteria to address wildfires in fire hazard areas in unincorporated portions of the county. Updating the CWPP is just one piece of Together Jeffco. We are also updating other critical planning documents and doing this at the same time, which allows us to use the most updated data across the board. For example, we can consider wildfire risk while also planning for land use decisions. The scope of the CWPP will cover all of unincorporated and incorporated Jefferson County, including all jurisdictions and special districts. And Commissioner, if I can just add a couple notes, to review those documents, make comments, or learn about upcoming public meetings, the public can visit TogetherJeffco.com.
Thank you for that information, Adele. If you have a question, please submit a question in the chat, and let's take some time to address some questions and concerns from the Jeffco community.
Alrighty, our next question is directed to Commissioner Kerr. Besides utilizing SLASH collection sites, how can community members prepare their homes to protect them against wildfires?
Thank you. So there are lots of things that you can do, collecting SLASH around your disposal of it in various sites is a way to start. You should also sit down and over dinner with the family, have a discussion about what to do on a day-to-day basis. You should know evacuation routes, and if possible, you should have at least two evacuation routes and practice them with the entire family. You should definitely go to the sheriff's website and look up the "be your own hero" information, what you can do to prepare for any emergency wildfire, but any emergency. And how to best... Talk to your neighbors, be a part of your community groups that talk about making sure that everyone in the neighborhood is at least aware of all of these different things that people have a plan.
Pardon me, Commissioner Kerr, can you please double-check your microphone?
I can double-check my microphone, and it was not on, so now it is. I'll go back and repeat all of that. Hopefully, you heard most of that. One of the things we also learned from the Marshall Fire is that there were a lot of people that were trying to return to a neighborhood at risk to save their pets. It would be good to talk to your neighbors if you work outside of the home and your pets are home alone during the day. Have a plan and place with neighbors so that you don't have to go evacuate your pets, but maybe have a plan with your neighbors to help each other out. So those are some different things that everyone can do.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. Our next question is for Tom. What should community members avoid following a wildfire?
Following a wildfire, I think one of the important things is not re-entering before you're authorized to do so by the Sheriff's Office, and Mark could speak to that a little bit more. Again, I think really assessing the situation on your property is important, and contacting your insurance companies and local fire districts to consult with them about practices that you should do to re-enter your property.
Thanks, Tom. Our next question is from Michelle for Commissioners Dahl Kemper and Commissioner Kerr regarding financial assistance for wildfire mitigation. Michelle, you can ask your question.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure you're aware that mitigating private property is a very expensive endeavor. Does the county have a plan to offer financial assistance to individuals who are willing to mitigate? And if not, is the county planning to institute such a plan?
Michelle, this is Leslie. Thanks so much for your question. It's a great question, and it's also an issue that we've heard of interest from homeowners who are doing the work around mitigation, defensible space, and more to ensure that their homes are protected should a wildfire come through your community. One of the things... We do not have a plan in place at this time, in part because the county is facing budget challenges in 2025, which we'll talk a little bit more about in just a moment. However, one thing that we have been doing is we have been working very closely with our elected leaders in the state legislature. Legislators like Senator Cutter, who's the Chair of the Wildfire Matter Review Committee, which is an interim committee that looks at legislation to introduce in the 2025 legislative session related to these very topics. And we have advocated for additional grants for homeowners to help with those costs. We know that we have the fastest-aging population in Jefferson County, for example, and a number of our homeowners are on a fixed income, but they live in the WUI, in Evergreen, Conifer, Pine, and the surrounding area, and it can become quite costly to mitigate homes. So know that we're working very closely with our legislators on these issues. Thank you for your question.
Thank you Commissioner Dahl Kimper. Our next question is from Jamie, for Commissioners Dahl and Kerr. Jamie, feel free to ask your question.
I don't have a Jamie listed as an attendee, so it's possible they're dialing in. If you are, please put your number in the chat so that we can get you unmuted and come back to you.
Okay. I'll come back to that question. Our next question is for our commissioners here, from Nate, in regards to open space and wildfire mitigation. Nate, please feel free to ask your question. Nate, are you on the line? Alrighty, I will ask your question Nate. Nate wants to know, with the mitigation efforts done already and planned, why mitigate directly along the existing trail systems in the Elk Meadow? This is creating a less pleasurable and healthy experience for people and animals while hiking in hot sunny weather.
Thanks for that Nate, this is Commissioner Kerr. I'm going to turn over to our Director of Parks and Conservation, Tom Hobie, to answer that question.
Thank you Commissioner Kerr, and Nate, thank you for the question. There's a couple reasons for cutting down trees adjacent to trails. One is that they, in some instances, they can create a greater fire break, which is, which is beneficial to firefighters. The second, depending on the species that it is, it's lodgepole pine, it's difficult to, to selectively cut lodgepole pine because they depend on one another to stand in the forest. And third, it's part of the forest health prescription that, that we identify by using a variety of different science and prescriptions, so that we can create the kind of forest health that we seek. So while the work, the difficulty is when the work first gets done, it's, it's a very stark contrast from what folks are used to. Over time, that understory will, will fill in and will be quite a bit more healthy and provide better habitat, a better scenic experience, et cetera. So those are a couple of the reasons that we would, we would take that practice.
Thanks Tom, and thanks Nate for your question. I'm going to go back to Jamie with a question directed toward Commissioner Kerr and Commissioner Dahl Kimper. Jamie, please ask your question.
Yes, thank you. So I've received a lot of feedback around both the Elk Meadow Open Space Clearcutting and also the Three Sisters Park on Evergreen Mountains, similar to the previous commenter. And my question is, I'm concerned about clear cutting rather than selective cutting of trees, and also if the, if the space that's needed for fire mitigation, why it's happening along the trails when there could be additional spaces closer to the homes? And then the follow-ups in terms of the south end of the Elk Meadow Open Space, which is currently closed and I think is having planned mitigation, if there's an opportunity for community feedback and input and, and hear about fire marshal recommendations and environmental science forest service recommendations and how they're being incorporated into that plan.
Jamie, this is Leslie, thanks so much for your question. I know that Jefferson County Open Space looks at the science when it thinks about forest health, and I'd like to turn it back to Tom Hobie to talk a little bit more in-depth about how they approach it.
I'd like to, I'd like to start with your question about community involvement first. We definitely will continue our efforts, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, to engage the community and talk to them, get feedback from them, make adjustments to our forest health prescriptions based on that information. The, the work that we're doing today is guided by our Jeffco Open Space Forest Health Plan, which is, was adopted by the Board in 2021 and was crafted with a lot of consultation from various scientists with the US Forest Service, the State Forest Service, and others. We use that as a guide to develop prescriptions for each one of the sites. And so what you'll, you'll see, if you really look at a site closely, is you'll see more aggressive thinning when we're closer to the built environment, and less aggressive thinning, and possibly no thinning whatsoever in areas that are further away from the built environment. That's very purposeful to protect that catastrophic fire event on the built environment, as well as the natural environment. The, so the, the question about cutting trees adjacent to trails, I just addressed, but I'll just cover it real quickly here, and that is, in some cases, those, those trails can create a fire break, in other cases, it's because of the species, and in still other cases, it's because we're trying to achieve a certain balance of, of trees in that particular area based on the prescription for that project.
Thank you Tom. And I'll take one more question before we move to our next section of our Town Hall. This question is from Tim, directed toward Mark or either Commissioner Dahl Kimper, regarding wildfire response in our sheriff's office. Tim, please feel free to answer your question. Ask your question.
Yeah, my question is, with the Quarry Fire, I was really noticing that, you know, Jeffco has, has really upped its game. DFPC was involved, FEMA, various other agencies, Douglas County, several fire districts, and I was really, really impressed with Sheriff Marnelli. She was out here almost every day. She was up early in the morning, she was here late at night, and I was really happy to see this level of collaboration. And I'm just wondering, you know, how did that come about, and what's that going to look like going forward?
Well, I, I thank so much Tim for your comments, and certainly collaboration is what our main focus is, especially when it comes to community safety, when it comes to evacuation, and then certainly cleanup efforts afterwards. On that note, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Guckey to talk a little bit more about how all of that work comes together.
Thank you Commissioner Dahl Kimper. Going back over history has taught us many things, but in the mid 90s, we, with the assistance of the commissioners, we pushed that fires in Jefferson County are huge risks. So we, we adopted the policy and still have it today of hitting it hard and hitting it fast. That comes at expense, but it can save a huge expense. So in the fire, wildfire response arena, the locals have the fire first, and we assist. When it reaches their capacity, it becomes a county fire. And when the county gets tapped out, usually over fire management, the, the response management, we kick it to the state, and DFPC is that arena. They're usually with us very early on in the fire. We go through what's called the risk assessment. We start scoring what's at risk. Sounds weird, but it kind of keeps the fire, keeps us ahead of the fire. When it reaches a point, we get assistance from the state financially with the Emergency Fire Fund, which the county commissioners participate. We do that annually, it's like an insurance policy, and usually the first fire wipes it out, and then the governor has to keep replenishing it so we can get our assistance. The state is heavily involved as they are with wildfire response, purchasing two helicopters, the MMA, which is the multi-mission aircraft, which we use for acreage tracking and hotspots. They've had that online for many years, assisting us. They accept usually fire responsibility for aircraft from the onset, which assists us. We get more involved in the manpower, and we use them for aircraft. There's disaster declarations that are in place. We, when the county's heavily involved in a fire, we push the commissioners to accept a declaration, and that allows us to push the state and apply with FEMA, and we'll get the FMAC assistance, which is generally a 75 to 25% reimbursement. And that's, involves everybody involved in the disaster, even with cleanup. We can bring in the roll-offs, we can bring in chipping crews and start mulching a lot of this downed forestry, and try to get it off the property and out of the neighborhood. So it's kind of a building block process that's pretty well-defined anymore, unfortunately.
And I'll, I'll have to add, Mark, it was extraordinary to see Incident Command at work up close, where you have members of various fire rescue districts that are present, as well as state leaders and the Jeffco Sheriff's Office and other partners. And then that's also coupled with the Red Cross, with our Jeffco School District, which helped with the evacuation center. The continual updates, three updates throughout the day, every day at the evacuation center to make sure that residents were in the know, that they had timely, accurate information, led in large part by our sheriff's office, along with some of our other partners who are in the mix. So it really was an extraordinary effort.
Yes. The incident management team is a volunteer-based, a lot of retirees involved in that arena that assist us. We bring it about. The Quarry Fire was a state fire. It elevated to that, but we kept it as management. Our IMT was very knowledgeable and well-coordinated and kept it. So even our fire management officer was the incident manager on a state fire. So it gets, it's nice having these volunteers and that assistance to keep things going.
Great. And just one other thing I'd like, I'd like to mention is that recently the state purchased a Firehawk, it's a converted military helicopter specifically to put out fires, and the state actually keeps one of them at the county airport, the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. It has a hangar there, and so it's, it's quite close to everywhere in Jefferson County and quite centrally located along the Front Range. Additionally, the county airport, the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, houses a US Forest Service tanker base, and so those tankers you see that are distributing the, the fire, the red fire or pink retardant, that those are based there at the county airport along with the Firehawks. So, and again, very centrally located for us. So I, again, I want to thank everyone for the great questions and feedback, and to our amazing staff for the information and for joining tonight. And before we move on to our let's top, our next topic, let's ask another survey question. Amber?
Yes, to participate, be sure to select your answer on the screen. The survey question is, how safe do you feel in Jefferson County? Very safe, somewhat safe, neither safe nor unsafe, somewhat unsafe or very unsafe? Please select your answer now. And again, thank you for participating in our survey questions tonight. For our final topic, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Dahl Kimper.
Great, thanks so much Amber. Tonight, we want to discuss the county's 2025 budget process and some of the financial challenges that we're working hard to address. We're going to introduce in, in just a moment, Jeffco CFO, Dr. Stephanie Corbo, and Dan Conway, the Jefferson County Strategy and Budget Director. They are joining us for this part of the conversation. But we do want to remind you, if you have a question, please submit your question in the chat. We'd like to get to as many of your questions as possible tonight. Mr. Conway and Dr. Corbo, thank you so much for joining us. We began work on the 2025 budget earlier than normal this year. Can you talk a little bit about why, and share an update with us about where we're at?
Thank you Commissioner Dahl Kimper. As we've been discussing with our community, the county continues to face significant financial challenges. The county has already made reductions in the general fund to slow the rate of spending and balance the county's budget. These reductions have and will continue to impact essential public services, such as public safety, roads, and more. Despite these spending reductions, the county continues to experience a gap in allowed revenue growth and the cost to provide those vital services. Due to the scope of these financial challenges, last fall, we began the process of developing next year's budget, nearly six months ahead of schedule. By starting early, we have been able to explore a broader range of solutions to address these challenges, from additional spending reductions to possible revenue solutions. While the work is still in progress, through these extra efforts, we hope to meet the challenges Jefferson County faces next year and beyond.
Great, thank you for that information Dan. Home values in Jefferson County and across Colorado are skyrocketing, so that's good for homeowners in terms of resale value, but also rising home values also means homeowners are paying more in property taxes. Yet Jefferson County continues to face significant budget challenges, so a bit of a conundrum there. So can you tell us more about why the increases in property taxes, a major source of funding for the county, won't help balance the budget?
Even though the market has driven a sharp increase in property values recently, this does not necessarily translate to an increase in revenue for the county. This is because state law limits how much total revenue local governments, like the county, can retain and spend each year. This means that the county portion of your property tax bill may have increased, but the county is unable to retain that revenue for use for critical county services, and must instead refund it to taxpayers. It's important to remember that for every dollar the county collects from property taxes, approximately only 24 cents will remain with the county to provide services. The other 76 cents are passed along to public schools, special districts, and cities for their use. The taxpayer dollars the county does retain are used to deliver vital services to the community, but the levels of revenue the county can retain each year are determined by state law. This means the allowed growth of revenue fails to keep pace with the cost of providing county services to our increasing population. This gap between allowed revenue growth and the cost to provide services is the primary factor that shapes the county's continuing financial challenge.
You know, Dan, thanks so much for answering that question. It is a common question we get from constituents, and I really appreciate your explaining that. Talk to us a little bit more about our next steps in the budget process.
Absolutely. So the county continues to gather data and public opinion to explore potential solutions to address these financial challenges, and most importantly, to determine what services matter most to our taxpayers. This information will then be used to develop recommendations for a balanced budget for 2025 and beyond.
Thank you for that information Dan. In addition to the strategic, the, this strategic and early work on the 2025 budget, the Jeffco Board of County Commissioners unanimously voted earlier this month to place a revenue retention question on the November ballot. The Board of County Commissioners expressed during a public hearing that they believe Jeffco voters should have the opportunity to decide if the county can retain additional revenue to address budget shortfalls and a growing backlog in infrastructure needs. Mr. Conway, do you have any final thoughts?
Well, these are certainly complex challenges, to say the least, and the conversation with our county leaders and the community will continue throughout the year as we prepare the 2025 budget. I want to say thank you to the commissioners, to the county manager, and everyone who has made time to sit down and have these really challenging budget conversations.
Great, thank you Dan. And if you have a question, please submit it in the chat. Now let's take some time to address questions and concerns from the Jeffco community.
Our next question is from Mark, for our commissioners, or Dan, if you want to also chime in as well. Mark, please ask your question. Mark, please ask your question.
All right, I'm just going to read it here. I submitted it actually about 40 minutes ago, so I'm just going to go ahead with it. It says, "We've just recently experienced one of the largest tax increases in Colorado history, referring to the roughly 40% increase in our property taxes. This was done without any sort of vote, rather it was virtually automatic based on assessed values of our properties. Seems that no county commissioner or any other elected political official made any attempt to keep such a huge increase from taking place by changing the mill levy, which would be the primary way to do that. And yet I've heard no one articulate a need for such an increase, nor explain where all those extra funds are being deployed. So I would appreciate if someone could tell me why we need such an increase and where those funds are going."
Great, thank you, Mark. And so, Dan, I know you touched on some of those points, but with a specific example here, can you kind of point us, take us through those examples?
So thank you for the question. And so what we're seeing really in the recent market is it's driving up the actual values of properties around the county, around the state. And that is the primary force that increases our property tax bill. The assessment rates are set by state law, and the mill levies are adopted by the county that apply a tax rate to that value. And so those mill levies are already set by the time the actual values come in from the market. So if we see a large spike in the market value, then those set mill levies and assessment rates will be applied to that value. So that's one of the reasons we can't adjust that tax bill after that actually occurs. How these dollars are employed is actually speaks to what I mentioned earlier, that the county is actually not able to retain the majority of those increases in revenues. As I mentioned, the majority of your tax bill, on average, is going to be going to those other entities within the county, the school district, the cities, the special districts, whereas the county only retains about 24 cents of your dollar. And even that amount is limited by what percentage we're permitted to grow by state law. So for example, last year, we refunded to taxpayers approximately $39 million. Those are dollars that were driven by the market value of our properties that exceeded the limit that's set by state law. This year, we are anticipating to refund about $30 million. So while the tax bill is paid, we, because of that law, have to turn around and refund those dollars back to the taxpayers.
Thanks, Dan. We have another question for you. How does the 2025 budget differ from the 2024 budget in terms of reductions and deficit?
I think one of the biggest challenges, and Dan, I'm going to turn this over to you as well, but I think one of the biggest differences is the American Rescue Plan Act. You know, we have cut, I think it's approximately $25 million earlier from our budget over two years. Then during COVID, the counties, cities, and others received federal funding, and that helped to stave off any additional budget cuts. Those dollars from federal funding have now come to a close. That's probably the biggest difference between 2024 and 2025. In 2025, we are now looking at a potential budget reduction of approximately $20 million. That number could change. Dan, is there more that you would add?
Commissioner, thank you. Really, just reinforce your point. For 2024, the 2024 adopted budget, we anticipate about a $15 million deficit. And when we say deficit, we're referring to that gap that I mentioned earlier between our allowed revenue growth and our cost to provide services. That is with still using those federal dollars, leveraging those federal ARPA rescue plan dollars. Once those dollars drop off, we are anticipating, again, as Commissioner Dahlkember mentioned, about a $20 million gap for 2025. But we're still in the process of developing our proposed budget, and that dollar may change up or down a little bit.
And this might be our last question for this section of the Town Hall. It's from Mindy in regards to finance and labor. Mindy, please feel free to ask your question. Mindy, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just had a question about state grants for things like wildfire mitigation, wildfire protection. I know that other counties like Douglas County have been able to accept those, but Jefferson County cannot. Can you please explain why and what can be done about that? They're so critical.
Yeah, great, thanks for the question, Mindy. And yeah, and the key there is when you ask about state grants. As Dan explained, our revenue limits and how we're able to do our budget for next year based on the revenues that we receive this year. If we take, apply for and bring in state grants, those state grants count against our revenue limits. Federal grants do not. And so that's why you'll see Jefferson County often apply for federal grants. And I know the Sheriff's Office applies for many federal grants and receives many federal grants. And those grants don't count against our revenue limit moving forward, but the state grants do. And it's not that we don't apply for any state grants. There are some that we still do. But for large state grants, we tend to not apply for those because what ends up happening is that if we apply for a $1 million state grant for fire mitigation, we have to cut $1 million somewhere else in our budget. And so the offset there doesn't make it worthwhile. One of the critical pieces in here also is that every single taxpayer in Colorado pays into state taxes. So these state grants are all of our money. But as you mentioned, people in Douglas County, Douglas County is applying for these state grants, receiving them, and applying the fire mitigation for their citizens. And we're just unable to due to our budget and revenue limits.
Great, thanks so much, Commissioner Kerr. And we also want to thank all of you who tuned in tonight with great questions and feedback. Thank you to Dan and Stephanie for being here for this segment on the budget. We appreciate it very much.
We just have a few minutes left, so we're going to begin wrapping up. Commissioner Dahlkember, any closing remarks?
Sure. I just wanted to mention very briefly that we had a question related to the Commissioners' role and the role that we play in terms of the budget. And I wanted to share with you and with our community that for us, the budget really is a moral document. It's what we decide with you, our community, and with our county electeds, our incredible staff we have here at Jefferson County and others, on what the essential services are that we provide as a county and how we fund those services. We take the work on the budget very seriously, and we look forward to continuing to work with our community on those issues as we move forward. Again, just a huge thank you to all of you who are participating in tonight's telephone Town Hall. Please know how critical your input is, and we really value these opportunities to hear firsthand from you because your input, your questions, help to better inform our decision-making as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. Any closing remarks?
Great. I just want to, again, thank everyone for joining tonight. Thank you to our staff, Dan, Stephanie, Mark, Belle, Tom, Amber, and everyone else. There are a lot of other folks behind the scenes helping us through all this, and I just want to thank all of our staff. Also, if your question was not answered tonight, please feel free to send it to jeffcopublicaffairs@jeffco.us. Our Public Affairs team will work on tracking down an answer for you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, that email is jeffcopublicaffairs@jeffco.us. And to find a recording of tonight's conversation and the topics discussed, or if you have further questions, please visit our website, Thanks for joining us and have a great evening.